We have Chief Beretta and Joe Cantagis, are they mayor there in your office?
Yes, they're both right here.
Great. All right, anything, uh, anything else before we start Keith?
No, by all means.
We are recording, a little red light, great.
We are.
All right, everybody, it is seven thirty, it's April thirteenth, this is our first scheduled meeting for the month of April for Bridgeport Borough Council. We are called to order, welcome to our meeting, if everybody could please join me in pledging the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you folks. And now roll call, please Angela.
Corey Scott.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Randy Bennett.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
All right, that's everybody accounted for, thank you Angela. Uh, and for the record, from seven to seven thirty, we were in executive session discussing some matters of potential liability. And I'll turn it over to you Keith.
Thank you President Shank. Good evening, everybody. First up, for council consideration, the adoption of meeting minutes from the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Heard a motion from Ms. Nolan seconded by Mr. Scott, I believe, to go ahead and adopt the meeting minutes from March twenty-third, do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Next, for council consideration, the appointment of Joseph Cataginist to the position of fire police officer. And Chief Beretta, not sure if, uh, and Mayor Barbie, if you had anything to say prior to, uh, council considering this appointment?
I did not.
Just something briefly, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Cataginist, um, who is a twenty-five plus year veteran of the fire services, he's a code official, fire marshal, um, for East Norton Township and a member of two fire companies in Norristown Borough. And we're going to be lucky to have him to help us out in Bridgeport with, uh, the emergencies that, that they're coming up, so just thanking the mayor and Mr. Cataginist for being here today.
Thank all three of you gentlemen, much appreciated, members of council.
I will make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Heil to go ahead and appoint Joe Cantaginist to the position of fire police officer in Bridgeport. Any additional questions or comments from council?
Um, I would just say that we're very fortunate, looking at his resume, um, this Mr. Cataginist is very well qualified and we're lucky to have him.
Great. With that said, folks, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Mr. Cataginist, that is unanimous.
Okay, I will go ahead and proceed with swearing in.
Thank you.
Left hand on the back, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joseph Cataginist.
I, Joseph Cataginist.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey and defend.
Will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys, now go to.
Thank you, Mr. Cataginist. All right. Very good, um. Moving forward, and thank you again Mayor Barbie and Chief Beretta for, uh, for handling the oath ceremony, much appreciated. Uh, moving forward, for council consideration, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seven, authorizing the borough of Bridgeport to become members of the Keystone Municipal Insurance Trust for workman's compensation insurance coverage. Just for a little bit of background information, members of council in the audience, uh, our insurance policies, uh, renew, uh, in the late March, early April vicinity of, uh, of every year. Searching out the best rate, uh, for the municipal, for the borough, um, in our varying insurance policies, is one of the ways that we try to save the municipality money while also ensuring that our, uh, varying coverages, uh, meet our needs in the event of any of the sundry liabilities attached to them. Through our insurance broker, Brown and Brown, we have been able to gain entrance to the Keystone Municipal Insurance Trust. Uh, members of council, you may have, may be familiar with the Delaware Valley Insurance Trust, uh, or Divot, which is based in Horsham locally. Uh, we are part of that trust for our health insurance policy. Keystone Municipal, or KMIT as, uh, they go by, is based more out in the middle of the state, uh, but are a, uh, a competitor with Divot, and offer the same full, uh, full array of, uh, varying coverages. Uh, suffice it to say, being offered entry into KMIT is actually an exclusive membership, uh, believe it or not, that, um, that not every municipality is able to, uh, obtain, uh, you need to have a very low, uh, have basically a very good score in terms of, uh, in terms of the last several years, number of losses and, uh, claims, so, um, we installed a safety committee back in, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, and that I believe has gone a long way in, uh, keeping our claims down, uh, keeping our losses low, and ultimately has culminated in this, uh, entry into, uh, KMIT. So if, uh, council so approves, we would, uh, adopt resolution seven this evening that, uh, authorizes our entry into this trust.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to go ahead and, uh, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero seven regarding the Keystone Municipal Insurance Trust. Any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up for council consideration is resolution twenty twenty-one dash eight, uh, also, uh, attached to our entry into KMIT. Uh, affirming the borough of Bridgeport's compliance with Keystone Municipal Insurance Trust's requirements for certain pre-employment medical screenings. Members of council, uh, this and the previous resolution are two requirements of joining into KMIT. Uh, not only do we have to acknowledge that we are entering into the trust, we must agree to comply with, Keystone's, uh, KMIT's workers' comp compliance, the, to implement a hepatitis C pre-employment testing program for all applicable emergency services, employees, volunteers.
We don't do this already?
We do not. Now, there are, um, there are certain, there are certain, um, staff positions that do require a battery of, um, vaccinations and, and, and tests, but, uh, in terms of this specific, uh, screening, for this specific, the specific, uh, wing of our employment, uh, we do not.
And.
Sorry, go ahead Tony.
Oh no, and then, so this would be mandatory testing, which I'm all for, um, would that mean that they would need to be screened, like, in a certain time period, or, um, when there's new hires, I just didn't know how exactly how that would.
It would, it would specifically be for new hires, uh, from this point moving forward, new, uh, new police hires, both part-time and full-time, uh, police hires moving forward.
Uh, if, if this doesn't block, this doesn't block anybody from being hired, this is, this is for record-keeping to, to determine if somebody would contract Hep C on the job or not.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
That is correct, there is, uh, there is state legislature that states that, uh, certain, uh, certain, certain state first responder professionals, uh, police, uh, and I believe the empty as well, if, uh, if that person contracts up Hep C, uh, irrespective of whether or not it can be traced directly to an on, uh, at-work event, uh, it will automatically be considered a compensable workers' compensation claim, so insurance companies like KMIT and many others are trying to set up a baseline of knowing, clearly if any of our current officers would potentially have that, that, those, those, the, the, those would be exceptions that were made, but in order to, uh, join into KMIT moving forward, we need to ensure that we screen all new hires of, from here on out, so that KMIT knows whether or not it's a compensable claim through them.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion for Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, uh, to go ahead and pass resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero eight regarding the, uh, screening, pre-screening, for certain medical conditions for entry into the, uh, new insurance program, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that does pass unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Next up for council consideration, an address change request for the Mascaro Transfer Station facility. It is currently, uh, addressed as three twenty-nine West Sixth Street, and Mascaro is looking to change their address to fifteen Route two oh two bypass north. Members of council, in your packets, you will find a memorandum and a brief, excuse me, informational packet from Fire Chief Wanzick, outlining this request from JP Mascaro. Effectively what Mascaro is trying to do is keep delivery traffic and, uh, you know, commercial and industrial traffic, i.e. dump trucks and other varying deliveries they have, from being delivered to their back door at the, uh, at the dead end of Sixth Street, and divert traffic up to the, uh, to the Route, Route two oh two bypass, uh, point of en- entry and exit that they have, uh, to the facility. Are there any questions on this, uh, on this request?
No, it makes sense, uh, if you need a motion, I'll make a motion to approve this request.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Heil, seconded by Mr. Fee to go ahead and approve the address request is laid out there by Mr. Truman, described in the memo from Mr. Wanzick on, uh, April seventh. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that passes unanimously, thank you.
Very good, thank you all. Moving forward to unfinished business, are there any items of unfinished business that any members of council may have this evening? All right, seeing none, we can move forward to committee reports, are there any committee reports to share this evening?
Um, I just want to say real quick from the sustainability committee that Saturday, uh, I almost said September, I wish, um, April twenty-fourth is the spring cleanup day, uh, we will be meeting at the Borough Lot, uh, at ten AM that morning. Um, we will have, uh, bags, gloves, all of that will be provided, don't forget your mask. Uh, but I can't wait to see people come out and bring, uh, cleanup day back to town.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we can move forward to the mayor's report, uh, Mayor Barbie, do you have anything for us this evening, sir?
I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, moving forward to the chief's report, Chief Beretta.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening, everyone, just wanted to thank, uh, um, our partnership with the Pennsylvania State Police for assisting us, we've been, um, uh, doing, um, some aggressive driving or some calming details along the two oh two or the DeKalb Street corridor, uh, so just asking people to slow down. So you'll be seeing, uh, Pennsylvania State Police units and our, our units, uh, yesterday, today and tomorrow, um, along the corridor. We'll also be doing some weigh details in the borough on Friday, and, uh, there will be a DUI checkpoint, um, in the borough of Bridgeport, uh, next Friday, and there'll be, uh, uh, a news release from that, from the Pennsylvania State Police to, uh, to come. Uh, we're having a, uh, a church leadership summit, uh, next, next, uh, next Friday, with, uh, the members of the, the clergy of Bridgeport and Upper Marion and Norristown, talk about how we can help each other, um, and help our, the members in our communities, so, uh, many thanks to Father Ron, Father Luis, uh, Father Gus, uh, George Seafrost, and Pastor Aaron from, uh, First Presbyterian of Bridgeport for hosting this, uh, this little summit meeting. So we're just asking people, people to continue to call in, we have some complaints about traffic, um, some people, uh, called in about Union Avenue, and about East Rambo and Depot Streets, and there's probably been over a hundred vehicle contacts over the period of last couple of weeks, um, to calm the traffic, so you'll be seeing red and blue lights, um, if you don't stop at those red stop signs, so please take care, our children with the warm weather are going to be out, and if, uh, just even only for care of our children in Bridgeport, um, uh, take it easy, you can look for some specific enforcement on Holstein Streets and, uh, um, in the next couple of weeks. Uh, just want to thank everybody for, uh, thank Borough Council, um, for the capital expenditures, we just installed our Case Cracker Audio Visual Room, um, today, um, in Bridgeport PD, so that's, uh, moving us toward, uh, even a greater level of transparency, so thank you for your investment in the police department and its training, and that's what I have for you tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Beretta. Moving forward to new business, are there any members of council with new business for this evening?
I do, chief, I want to thank you guys, I know, two weeks ago, three weeks ago at our meeting was when we discussed some of that traffic issues and, uh, people running stop signs in town, and within a day or two, I saw some squad cars out there, uh, addressing that, so thanks for being so proactive and, and jumping on that so quickly.
Our pleasure, sir.
All right, very good, thank you both. Um, I did have one item of new business that I would like to, uh, to announce. It is that time of year again, the two thousand and twenty-one Dr. Vincent Morales Scholarship Program has opened back up. Any high school, uh, any Bridgeport resident who has, uh, who has lived in Bridgeport for at least the last two years, um, and is seeking a post-high school degree, uh, whether that is a graduating senior from one of the varying public or parochial schools in the area, or a non, a non-traditional student who is, uh, looking to, uh, obtain, excuse me, uh, looking to obtain a secondary education, open to all of you, uh, I would encourage residents to, um, if, uh, if your students are in the local school systems, um, whether that's parochial or public, the Morales Scholarship applications have already been sent off to Upper Marion School District and the local parochial schools, um, so they are aware, your counselors should be able to, uh, provide you with an application. By tomorrow, the Morales Scholarship application will be back up on the Borough website, and additionally, we have hard copies of the Morales Scholarship application at our front desk. Thursday, May sixth, is the submission deadline where those need to, uh, need to be back to, uh, back to the borough so that our scholarship committee may, uh, make their evaluations and decisions, and the announcement of the, uh, parents, I'm sorry, parents, and the winner, winners and parents will be notified on Wednesday, May twelfth, and hopefully will attend a, uh, a meeting, a public meeting to be honored on Thursday, May twenty-fifth. So again, anybody interested in, uh, applying to the Morales Scholarship, uh, talk to your, uh, talk to your school guidance counselor, or contact the Borough at six one oh two seven two one eight one one, and we can hook you up with the, with an application as well, so thank you. And best of luck to, uh, to all future applicants. Moving forward to open forum and announcements, are there any, uh, announcements that any members of council wish to make this evening? All right, seeing none, there is one item that I wanted to, uh, to, to discuss, as is outlined on the agenda, uh, I, addressing concerns with residential waste collection service. I wanted to take a moment and speak to the Bridgeport residents regarding recent problems that have been experienced with our residential trash and recycling pickups. I say recent, but in reality, there seems to have been a spike in service-related complaints since the introduction, introduction of the COVID virus to our region, along with subsequent workforce interruptions that began shortly thereafter. While for the most part, residential trash and recycling runs smoothly in the borough on a weekly basis, there do appear to be blocks and areas of town that are more prone to missed pickups and other issues, particularly areas like the three hundred block of Grove Street, Beach Court, and some blocks on Prospect and Frailly. Uh, I know that many of you in the, in these areas have had to contact the Borough multiple times in recent months for missed collections and other problems, and for that, the Borough apologizes. What the Borough wishes to make residents aware of is the following, there is a contract between the Borough and our municipal waste hauler, JP Mascaro and Sons. This contract outlines expectations in terms of service, performance, and hours of operation, among many other things. I bring this up because many residents ask, what is the Borough going to do in order to address these ongoing missed pickups? And I want residents to understand the language in this agreement, specifically the following, and this is a direct excerpt, uh, a direct excerpt, excuse me. Uh, if the contractor does not provide the missed pickup collection service within twenty-four hours, and the Borough incurs costs associated with the collection and disposal of materials, the contractor will be liable for all labor and disposal processing costs associated with managing missed pickups. This simply means that Mascaro has an additional twenty-four hours past the day of collection in order to address any missed pickups before the Borough can act, whether that action results in the Borough collecting the missed trash and disposing of it, or assessing a fine for any of the infractions that are stipulated in the contract. In short, while the Borough realizes how frustrating it may be to have your trash missed, not only missed, but missed consistently sometimes, the hauler is not technically violating the terms of our agreement if they come back within twenty-four hours, or within that twenty-four hour window and correct the situation. Obviously, we all want a situation where all the stops get picked up on a weekly basis without residents or Borough staff ever having to notify Mascaro that they missed pickups. That is the expectation we should all have when entering into an agreement of this nature. Uh, the last two weeks do seem to have been much better than the previous handful of weeks, but still, we ask residents to notify us when there's a problem with your collection day. Yes, you can notify Mascaro also, but the Borough also keeps a log of these complaints, which is helpful for us to have when sorting through all of this with Mascaro. And I'll go a step further, a resident should be notifying the Borough of not just missed pickups, but also of trash cans being left in the street, leaving spilled garbage and recyclables in the street, or curbside, using a leaky truck to go through town, or damaging and/or carrying away personal trash cans beyond normal wear and tear. I'd like to stress that getting photo evidence of any of these problems will always be more helpful than just an eyewitness account, that just goes for any situation these days. The Borough is committed to making these problems cease to exist for residents. This is taxpayer money going toward this public service, and we will go to bat for our residents. Call or email the Borough when these errors take place, and we will get them quickly rectified. Thank you. Additionally, this dovetails into a public comment that we had this evening from a Mr. Pat LaFredo of three twenty-five Grove Street, who voiced his extreme displeasure with, uh, Mascaro's performance in recent months. So hopefully, this comment addresses his inquiry as well.
And Keith, thanks for, uh, appreciate you bringing that up in this meeting, I know it's been an item of conversation the last month or two in town, so, uh,
Sure.
the explanation I think will be, will be appreciated.
Thank you, much appreciated, like I said, it, it's, it, I feel horrible for the handful of residents because it seems to be the same couple of blocks, week in and week out, you know, people on Fifth or Sixth or Seventh Street might not even realize that there are, uh, issues going on, but it seems like, uh, certain blocks of Grove and Rambo and, or, excuse me, Grove and Prospect, uh, get hit with these quandaries week in and week out, so it's assuredly frustrating, but please continue to contact us, and we will make sure that it gets rectified, so thank you. One other announcement, uh, that I wanted to make, as of, um, we recently received, we recently received a notification that the major Penn dot paving project that was supposed to take place in two thousand and twenty, i.e. the repaving of Ford Street and the Calb Streets, um, was supposed to take place last year but got shelved due to, uh, COVID nineteen-related, uh, economic concerns, are back on, and Penn Dot plans on being in town beginning this Friday, April sixteenth, to start the milling project on Ford Street. Once they are done milling Ford Street, they will then move to DeKalb, and they plan on that day being Tuesday, April twentieth. So I guess about two or three days to, it'll take to mill Ford Street, and then they'll jump over to DeKalb. I want to remind residents that this is the entire length of both Ford and DeKalb Street, so DeKalb, basically from Crooked Lane, all the way to the Schuylkill River Bridge, all the way to Norristown, and from Ford Street, uh, basically from DeKalb all the way down to Dino's, down to Route twenty-three, Fourth Street, so the entire stretch of both roads. As is required by, uh, by the state, and Penn Dot is a state agency, um, they will begin posting these state roads as no parking. Should be no later than tomorrow, in order to give as close to forty-eight hours notice, uh, to, uh, to anybody who parks along these two streets, uh, as they can. And additionally, um, as is Penn Dot regulation, the majority of their asphalt work takes place in the evening hours. Uh, I would recommend that, uh, if there are any concerns with the Penn Dot paving project, uh, you can certainly call Borough Hall, and we can help you as, to as great an extent as possible, but if there are any, uh, issues that, that, that residents may think are actionable as a result of, uh, as a result of this, uh, this construction, I would recommend calling Penn Dot District Six Office at six one oh two zero five sixty-seven hundred. Um, we will provide as many updates and notifications as we can to the residents, uh, if there are any updates or press releases that come in terms of, uh, traffic lane, uh, lane closures or, or, or lane shifts, or any detours related to this, uh, these two streets being paved, but as of right now, we wanted to get the notification out to residents that beginning Friday, tentatively, pending inclement weather, Friday, April sixteenth, Ford Street will be, they'll start milling Ford, and then Tuesday, April twentieth, they should start milling DeKalb Street. Thank you.
Mr. Truman, I think, uh, before we started the meeting, you mentioned there were two public comments in the inbox, did we miss one?
Oh, I, I, I was going to keep that for, uh, for public comment, we had, we hadn't.
Oh, I thought we were there.
No, that was open forum and announcements.
Oh, all right.
So yes, we are moving to public comment now, and, uh, we did have an additional comment, uh, that comment was from Ms. Mary Ann Helsel, and it goes as. and it goes as follows.
Mrs. Helsel lives around the block from me, so it's imperative we get to her. That's why I jumped in there, Mr. Truman.
It goes as follows. I see that Bridgeport will be starting Twilight on the River and maybe Movie Nights. And yes, to both of those, Mary Ann. I was just wondering if Bridgeport will be having its fair too, referring to the Bridgeport Carnival. This may still be too early to ask this question since we still have no idea on how COVID will be in June, in June twenty-twenty-one. Thank you, Mary Ann Helsel. Yes, Mary Ann, at, at this point, we have not made a, made a firm call on whether or not we're going to hold the carnival. I think I certainly don't want to speak for council, but I think the overarching sentiment is we all want our, our higher-up governing bodies, be it the county and the state and the federal, to, to start giving us better news on, on loosening the restrictions on indoor and outdoor capacities, event capacities, and also delivering, you know, solid news on vaccination rates in order to put administration and the elected officials' minds at greater ease before, before welcoming, you know, what could potentially be hundreds, hundreds of people to a public event on a nightly basis. So any members of council that want to elocute further on the topic, please feel free. Very good. We expect, expect a final answer on the carnival. I would say, you know, no later than the, the next, the next public meeting that we have as that, that'll probably leave us just about thirty days out, so. But no, 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 no firm direction one way or the other at this point itself.
Well, with the first May meeting, we might be able to push that back even to the first May meeting?
We could, you know, it, it would not give us, I, I'd have to, I'd have to speak with the amusement vendor to see what, if he'd be comfortable with that. But yeah, it wouldn't give us a lot of time to advertise. Yeah.
Yeah, if we can find out if we have until that meeting, because I'm feeling things may change. Things are hopefully improving weekly, and that two weeks or however it is between the last April meeting and the first May meeting may prove consequential in that decision.
Understood. There are no further public comments. So therefore, unless any other member of council has any, anything else that they wish to cover, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Scott to adjourn the meeting. Folks, it's eight oh four. This meeting is adjourned. Everybody, please stay safe. Please go get your vaccinations, and we will see you in person as soon as it is possible. Thanks so much. Have a great night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you.